All right, good evening. I'm going to go ahead and call to order the August 18th regular meeting of the Moundsview School Board. Good evening, welcome for all of those who are tuning in. First item of business is item 1.2, adoption of the agenda. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Bach?
Aye.
Danielson?
Present.
DeMay?
Aye.
Glassheen?
Aye.
Sager?
Aye.
Westerman, aye. Chair Weinhegen?
Aye. Motion carries. They'll take us to item 2.1, open forum, public comments. And I believe we do have at least one comment, and Sarah O'Rourke will read that into the record.
Yes, thank you, Chair Weinhegen. I have a letter that was submitted by President Stacy Vanderport and the Executive Board of the Moundsview Education Association. To School Board Chair Jonathan Weinhe, School Board Members Superintendent Lennox, and Assistant Superintendent Rital Hoover. The educators of the Moundsview Education Association know what is best for students and staff is a safe and well-planned learning environment. In a non-pandemic school year, we know that learning happens best face-to-face. Navigating the education of our students in the middle of a pandemic is not normal. Based on the feedback of our members through meetings, FAQ feedback, and surveys, many concerns are being voiced about the safety and well-being of students and staff in our buildings. The purpose of this letter is to communicate the findings of a survey completed by MBEA members. The results show members' concerns across the system regarding the district's blended learning model for the 2020-2021 school year. The safety of students and staff is at the heart of members' apprehension regarding in-person teaching models. Of the 595 MBEA member survey responses, 70% believe we should begin this school year in a distance-learning model. 77% do not believe the blended learning model is safe or feasible at this time, and 69% do not feel safe returning to school in a blended model, even if all of the safety protocols the district has communicated are followed. The most frequently noted safety measures needed for our members to feel safe to return in a blended learning model include clear protocols on notifying staff, students, and families, for example, who gets notified, etc., of COVID-19 exposure; a plan for what happens when a student or staff member does not comply with safety requirements; a plan for contact tracing; a plan to manage all non-classroom settings, for example, hallways, common spaces, bathrooms, etc.; having a safe place to eat lunch; hand sanitation stations in every classroom and at every entry point of the building. We are asking for detailed plans that are feasible and sustainable according to MDH and CDC guidelines, and for staff to be walked through these plans within their buildings. If our schools open to any in-person learning, a safe environment is required. If proper safety protocols and detailed plans cannot be in place by the start of the school year, then the school year should start in a full-distance learning model. In addition to safety responses, MBEA members also shared concerns about having adequate time to collaborate and plan for the school year. To provide high-quality instruction within this pandemic school year, more planning time than usual is essential. Extra time in the coming weeks before school, as well as extra time throughout the school year, would help us provide the best learning experience for students and families regardless of the adopted model. Based on MBEA member input, it is our recommendation that the Moundsview School District start the year in a distance-learning model for all levels. Our commitment to safety and equity is at the heart of our recommendation. We acknowledge there are many complex and multifaceted factors that must be balanced when deciding on the district model. We recognize that shifting gears to an all-distance learning model to begin the school year presents its own challenges for families. We understand our district leadership and school board are making decisions with the most current information available. We urge you to strongly consider starting the school year with an equitable distance-learning model for all students. This is an opportunity to serve the entire Moundsview community, serve all of our kids, and provide students, families, and staff members the safest option possible to begin this unprecedented school year. We look forward to continuing these conversations and working together collaboratively in the days ahead. Sincerely, the Moundsview Education Association Executive Board.
Thanks, Sarah. Thank you to the Moundsview Education Association Executive Board for the thoughtfulness of that letter and the partnership that has been ongoing. We'll move down to 2.2, announcements. Shawna will acknowledge the gifts.
All right. So gifts were received from Moundsview and Irondale Seniors for the Nutrition Services Angel Fund for use district-wide; Becky Hapala for student support at Sunnyside Elementary; the Winkin Rooster for Meals on Wheels program district-wide; Genevieve Packer and the Medtronic for student support district-wide; Benevity Community Impact Fund for student support at Sunnyside Elementary; Beverage Solutions for 1,000 gallons of milk for summer meal district-wide; Salem Covenant Church for student activities at Bel Air Elementary; Alina Health on behalf of Renee Hamdorff for student activities at Bel Air Elementary; Dick and AJ Dragovic for volunteering, delivering meals for Meals on Wheels district-wide; the Thomas Companies for Girl Soccer Program at Moundsview High School; Marissa Sweet for student support at Sunnyside Elementary; Peggy Thomas for chapter books for classroom and a saxophone for student use at Island Lake Elementary; Your Cause Wells Fargo for general use at Moundsview High School; Strong S Hong and Zopec Medical LLC for 500 children's face masks for student use district-wide; Glamis Wire Inc. for the Girl Soccer Program at Moundsview High School; Glamis Wire Inc. for the Boy Soccer Program at Moundsview High School; North Oaks Community Foundation for the Orchestra Program at Moundsview High School. The following donations were received for the Ralphreyder Food Shelf from Barb and Ross Anderson; Carl Arnie; Timothy Belkey; Boston Scientific Your Cause Employee Giving Program; Laura Cole; Culvers of St. Anthony; Sweet Cream Enterprises, Diane Sparks and staff; Dick Dragovic; Vicky and Michael; Faith Christian Reform Church; Hunger Solutions Minnesota; Joel Walker; Carl Eckberg; Mike, Katie, and Hattie Calls; Laura Lindstrand; Matthew Lord; William McMahon; Medtronic Your Cause LLC; Mary Meyer; Bill and Fran Oberst; Roberta Peterson; Pilgrim House Fred and Carol Green; Robert Redpinning; Shepherd of the Hills; Tanisha Good and Pastor Bryce; Luke Smith; Maggie and John Snyder; Timothy Van Roy; Shoreview Community Foundation; US Bank Foundation Employee Matching Gifts Program; Jan and Paul Bergman Farley; InFaith Community Foundation Kim Borton; United Church of Christ of New Brighton Pastor Amy and Joe Broberg; Dennis and Janet Fromm; Regina Haugen; Nancy Haugen; Alaris Mortgage; Cheryl Habnan; Mr. and Mrs. Holt; Josephine M. Holt; Bethany Bethlehem Baptist Church Pastor Vince Johnson; Jan Crewmary; Terry Metcalf; Robert and Amanda Speak; Stefan and Noreen Thompson; Misty and Dallin Van Lahr; Land O' Lakes Megan Wool; and Rebecca Wooser. And the total gifts for schools and programs received this period were $17,413.31, and total gifts received for the Ralphreyder Food Shelf were $86,006.56. It is recommended that the board accept these gifts and extend our thanks to the donors.
Thank you. Additional announcements, upcoming board meetings, and a reminder that we are taking a blended approach to our board work. Work sessions will be in person, with the exception of work sessions that are immediately in advance of a board meeting, and our board meetings will continue to be hosted in a virtual format as we are tonight. So upcoming meeting dates September 15th, 6:00 p.m., a virtual work session of the board, followed by a 7:00 p.m. regular meeting of the board. October 1st, a 6:00 p.m. work session of the board in person at the district center. And October 20th, a 7:00 p.m. regular meeting of the board virtually. And that could change as our in-person instruction changes throughout the year. That'll take us to item 2.3, Superintendent's Report, Superintendent Lennox.
Yeah, I want to start this evening with a thank you to all of our employees who were busy at work over the summer. I don't think it's commonly understood that in July, when the governor opened up the state, schools actually provided a mix of both distance and in-person learning activities. I know most of the public attention has been focused on our return for the fall, but it's important to know that programming was being provided throughout the summer. Later tonight, you'll hear more about that, a report about our summer programming, and there were lots of fantastic things happening. But I'd be remiss if I didn't take a moment to thank all of our staff, both instructional and support staff, who were working to make sure our schools would be ready to reopen. Preparation for school is not something that's often highlighted, but I have to tell you, it is an enormous undertaking. Our staff is second to none, and I'm proud of all of the work they did over the summer, especially as we faced a pandemic and significant uncertainty about what the fall would bring. Our employees stepped up and made sure that we'd be ready for the school year. So tonight, I just want to say thank you and let them know how much we appreciate all that they've done. And one additional thank you, really, I want to extend to the school board and our community. Specifically, I want to say thank you again for prioritizing the construction of new spaces that we've been able to add across the district. You know, at the inception of the Facilities Task Force, there wasn't one of us that had any idea we'd be faced with a nationwide pandemic, and the need for new and additional space would become such a priority. But now, we couldn't be more fortunate than to have these new, expanded, flexible spaces right when they'll be needed most. The timing was impeccable, and the support of our community in adding these spaces will pay immediate dividends. So thank you again to the board and the community for your generous support. And with that, I'll end my report this evening.
Thank you, Chris. That'll take us to item 3.0, approval of the consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Bach?
Aye.
Danielson?
Aye.
DeMay?
Aye.
Glassheen?
Aye.
Sager?
Aye.
Westerman, aye. Chair Weinhegen?
Aye. Motion carries. We'll move on to item 4.1, 2020-2021 enrollment update, and Superintendent Lennox will present.
Yeah, thank you, Jonathan. Tonight, we wanted to provide you with an update on enrollment as we prepare for the 2020-21 school year. Clearly, this is a report being done under some very unusual circumstances. The impact of the pandemic and the potential for multiple learning models has added to the already complex work of projecting enrollment. And if you remember, this is simply a snapshot in time. We'll continue to monitor enrollment closely as we move into the school year. In your packet, you do have an enrollment overview by school site, and what I would do is draw your attention to the lower right corner of that sheet. You'll notice that the headcount as of August 13th was 11,546 students. Now, you may also notice that the headcount was 86 students under our original projection. But before you get nervous, I want to point out that the original projection was made pre-pandemic. It's also important to note that the October 1st enrollment from last year was 11,509 students, which means we're currently sitting 37 students over our enrollment from last year. Some will say, well, that doesn't seem like very significant growth, and on the surface, they'd be right. But something that's harder to see that I want to make sure I point out this evening in these numbers is the change in resident students. This number is often overlooked, but is truly significant for our school district, given that we're closed to non-resident enrollment. So let me provide a little bit of context. As you know, non-resident students who are currently attending our schools continue to age through our system and have done that over the last several years. So if we look back to last year's graduating senior class, the combined total for both high schools was 117 non-resident students who ended up graduating and leaving our system. So that means for us simply to stay even on enrollment, we needed to replace the non-resident students with resident students. So if you add the 117 non-residents who graduated, plus the 37 students over last year's October 1st enrollment, it actually means we currently have 154 new students who've come into our schools. So our enrollment is continuing to grow. But as I said, we're going to continue to monitor that closely as we enter the school year. Our principals are working closely with students and families, especially as they are making decisions around the different learning models. And it is quite possible that the pandemic may have yet unknown enrollment impacts, which is why we will continue to stay on top of this throughout the school year and bring back updates to the board on a regular basis. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have this evening. Otherwise, that is our current update for August, and we will be back to you with more detailed information as we enter the school year.
Thank you, Chris. Are there any questions on 2020-2021 enrollment? I think Sandra is trying to talk, but maybe I'm muted.
Sorry. Okay.
All right.
I think just looking a little further into those numbers, I think it's important to note that the elementary, and I think Chris mentioned this, but really, that is where the numbers are down. Overall, we're down from projections by 165 across our elementary levels, whereas with our high school, for example, we are up 74 across both high schools. So I think, I see that as, you know, not alarming at this point. We're going to continue to watch it, like Chris said, but I really do think that demonstrates the importance of, I see, you know, parents of elementary-age students looking for maybe some other options that provide them the ability to work outside of the home. So that might be what we're seeing there, I don't know, but I can only guess because that is an unusual trend for us.
Right. On that note, Sandra, I would just also note that our incoming kindergarten class is equal to or a little bit larger than our outgoing senior class, so that continues to be something that we track as kind of a 12-year trend for enrollment growth. So I think it's important for us to monitor this, to see all of the variables, and to your point, it is a really unusual time with the pandemic and all of the pressures that are on families, and, you know, I think we're all hearing different variations of how people are responding to that. But this doesn't cause me much pause at this point. Now, I reserve the right to change course on that in the weeks and months to come as our numbers become a little bit more clear headed towards October 1st.
I also want to point out an incoming freshman class at Moundsview at nearly 500, which is the biggest number I have seen in my time as a board member.
Yep. Agreed. Any other questions on enrollment from the board? Hearing none, I'm going to move us to what I think is the main event tonight, item 4.2, readiness for school opening. We're going to keep Superintendent Lennox in the hot seat and invite some of his cabinet members to join in presenting on this item tonight.
Right. Thank you, Jonathan, and you're right, this will be a team effort as we work our way through the presentation this evening. And typically, we do a readiness for school opening, but tonight, this is really an update about the planning that has been done around the reopening of our schools. So I am going to start the presentation, so if you'll give me a second to bring that up, I will do that right now. Full screen. Okay. And I hope you can all see those slides at this point? Yep, I'm seeing headnots. Okay. So as we move forward, we, for context, I think it's important if we go back to the end of last school year and really move forward from there. So you'll see some bullet points come up, and you may recall that in June of last year, school districts across the state were directed to create three very specific learning plans. We were expected to create plans for in-person learning, for blended or hybrid learning, as well as distance learning. And this planning wasn't optional. It wasn't something we could do or not do. We were all required to do it. It was expected to align with the over 100 pages of guidance that were given to us by the Department of Education and the Department of Health. And throughout July, teams started to dig into that guidance. Nine different subgroups were formed, and staff were included in the planning. Now, that said, I want to remind people how quickly things were changing at that time. It was often we'd get guidance one day outlining expectations, only to have that guidance change the next day, forcing us to start over. It was a confusing time, and we were just coming out of a stay-home order while at the same time trying to navigate what physically distant summer programming would look like for our students. There were really no clear answers, and we were all anticipating a decision from the governor about what learning model we would be expected to implement in the fall. So then, on July 30th, the governor unveiled the Minnesota Safe Learning Plan, but rather than determining a specific plan for all schools in the state, the guidance required school districts to use local health data to determine an appropriate learning model. And while that was likely the right decision for Minnesota, as all school districts across the state certainly aren't having the same experience with the pandemic, it was difficult not to have a unified decision. So now, as we've moved into August, feedback has evolved from wondering what the governor will do to advocating for specific learning models. And as we move forward, it's important for the public to know that the health and safety of our staff, students, and families remain a top priority. Please know that we're watching the local health data closely, and will refine the learning models based on the feedback we are receiving. All of this, of course, is being done with an eye on September 8th, which is the start of the 2020-21 school year. So tonight, we really want, as part of this report, to highlight the following areas. We're going to talk a little bit about the Minnesota Safe Learning Plan and the expectations that have been provided for school districts. We want to talk about health, safety, and operation considerations; the instructional models of in-person and distance learning; student and staff support that will be available; and communications and available resources for staff, students, and families. So let's get started by talking about the Minnesota Safe Learning Plan. And to do that, I would highlight again that on July 30th, the governor outlined the Minnesota Safe Learning Plan at his press conference with his team. And the top two items for the governor, the Department of Health and the Department of Education, were to prioritize safety, and second, to prioritize in-person learning specifically for young learners and school-supported learners. And the school-supported learners, for those who may not be as familiar with that term, really are students and families who have come to rely on schools to meet many of their needs. And the governor and his team, MDE, have asked us to make sure that we are working closely to align with what those learners will need and meet their needs as we move forward. So within the Safe Learning Plan, the expectation that was set for school districts is that we would use local county health data to determine which learning model should be implemented. In doing this, the Department of Health is really looking at a 14-day average for the county. And I really want to provide a disclaimer here for myself and for the majority of my superintendent colleagues, none of us are health experts. We've been asked by the governor and the Department of Health to follow the guidance. They continue to send us and prioritize both safety and the in-person learning. So what does that look like? Well, MDH, the Department of Health, is providing school districts that 14 data county average every week on Thursday. So you can see by the chart that the number of cases has been rising throughout July, and it recently reached 22.25 cases, and that's per 10,000 residents last Thursday. That's a significant increase in a short amount of time, and we are going to have to watch these numbers closely as we continue to move forward. Now, the learning model guidance that's been provided to district really is based on this chart as part of the Minnesota Safe Learning Plan. And when the governor first announced the plan, here in Moundsview, in Ramsey County, we were in the range of 16, roughly 16 cases per 10,000 residents. Now, that recommendation, if you look at the chart, would have been for in-person elementary and hybrid for secondary. But we were also given some additional local data and told that cases were on the rise and that we would be expected to pull back into a blended or hybrid learning approach once that case count reached 20. So as a district, we made the decision to plan for blended or hybrid learning at all levels, leaving the option, of course, up to any individual student or family to choose distance learning if they want to do that. That option is open to any family at any time in any district in Minnesota. So our rationale really was pretty straightforward. We wanted something that was going to be both safe and sustainable. We knew we were entering at 16, but because cases were rising, we anticipated crossing over the 20-case threshold and being moved into hybrid learning. One thing I would point out is that our next change, according to the model, would happen at 30 cases per 10,000 residents. And it's important to note that both the Department of Education and the Department of Health have said they will step in and require districts to implement a more restrictive model when they see cases increasing and when they pass certain thresholds. So again, we are going to be watching that data closely, but if cases do continue to escalate, it could be only a matter of time before we would be required to implement a distance-learning model in the district. So to that end, one of the things we've done is posted a learning model tracker on our district website. This is a static document that is going to be updated every Thursday when the new county data is received from the Department of Health. So please note that the data is always lagging by one week. The Department of Health has told us that in presenting data in this fashion, that allows them time to go back and make sure that the data has been double-checked and is accurate before they use it in their new calculations. So as a district, we'll be keeping a close eye on this. We'll keep it updated, and we'll inform staff, students, and the community as soon as we have additional data that may require us to move into a different learning model. So at this time, I'd be happy to take any questions, if you have them, about this part of the presentation and the learning model. Otherwise, I will hand it off to Assistant Superintendent Rital Hoover, who will move us forward, sharing information about health, safety, and operations.
I have a quick question.
Yep.
Superintendent, we can always go more restrictive under this plan, correct? But we can't go the other way.
Correct. So districts can look at what's happening in terms of the local data and make a more restrictive decision. In fact, that's what Minneapolis and St. Paul both did at the inception of the governor's announcement. What the state has said is they will not allow, they'll come in and provide guidance if you are trying to open up at a time when your case counts are escalating or transmission of the virus is increasing in your local community.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Yep.
This is Jim DeMay. When we hit 30, we have to go to online learning for secondary. How does that affect sports and such if we hit 30?
Yeah, so at 30, if a district is pushed into the distance learning, the High School League has said that they would suspend activities at that point. So we obviously will be continuing to talk with our, our conference, other schools, other school districts, but at, at that point, we likely have to suspend all High School League activities. Districts right now can choose, like Minneapolis and St. Paul, you can choose to be in distance learning, still participate in activities as long as you haven't crossed that threshold. But as soon as you cross the 30 cases per 10,000, they will suspend activities for the, for the high schools.
So, so on that note then, Chris, you could have a scenario where, let's say Ramsey County is at 30, and we have to go into distance. And so all sports are canceled, but Dakota County is still in the 20s. And so they could be still playing sports and having blended learning. Is that correct?
Yeah, so one of our neighbors, Spring Lake Park, is Anoka County. I think their current rate is about 18, where we're at 22. So we're on, on different sides of that, even the recommendations. So you could have neighboring districts operating very differently based on their local health conditions. Correct?
Other questions on this section of the presentation?
Okay. I'll move us forward, health, safety, and operations, and turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Rattle Hoover.
Good evening, everyone, members of the public. You know, I want to start by really sincerely thanking all of our employee groups for their partnership. In particular, I want to say a special thanks to the MBA, who we heard from tonight in their really thoughtful letter. And please note that both for, for those folks and as well as the greater public, our students coming back to our buildings and all employee groups, that the health and safety of all of our staff and students is the utmost priority for us in this work. Chris, could you please hit the next slide? I'd like to start by mentioning that we were, shared via MDE, MDH, and the governor, the 2020-2021 Planning for Schools with Respect to Health Considerations and Navigating COVID-19. It's a 19-page document that really details guidance, which includes requirements and recommendations around things such as having a COVID-19 coordinator, physical distancing to minimize exposure, face coverings, delivering of direct student support services, protecting vulnerable populations, significant hygiene practices, the cleaning and handling of materials, monitoring and excluding for illnesses, handling suspected or confirmed cases of COVID-19, the handling of all water and ventilation systems, transportation, and student support, mental health, and wellness. We've taken those, those guidelines, requirements, and recommendations very seriously in our planning. And Chris, if you could please hit the next slide. I wanted to share, and this is a little bit difficult to see via the slide here. Please note this is something that you, that is able to be viewed on our website. But I wanted to pay a particular attention to a couple of things of what blended learning in a school looks like. This includes things like playgrounds, social and physical distancing, the water fountains, and how we're going to be having those turned off with only the fillers available for students, the isolation rooms, if we have students who might be exhibiting symptoms or staff, how we're going to handle busing. We will be using multiple student entry and exit points, reducing congestion via signage, and controlled traffic patterns, the manner in which we will be distributing meals, using the restrooms, and also an abundant supply of hand sanitizers and wipes throughout the building. So really, the school is going to have the safety measures in place that will be significant underneath the requirements, recommendations, and guidance from the governor. With that being said, I think it's really important to note, as Chris alluded to, we are not health professionals. We are relying on the guidance set forth by those who are to put these, these safety precautions into place for our students and staff. And we are doing everything we can to go above and beyond those, those particular recommendations. Chris, could you please hit the next slide? One of the things I'd like to share here before we really dive in a little bit to what a blended classroom looks like is that at the outset of this, the guidance and recommendations from, from the state were to make use of the state fire marshal recommendations for physical distancing. We wanted to really dig into this. So we worked with world architects and engineers, who was also our partners in our construction projects. We asked them to analyze every space within the confines of our school district. They came back with a really thorough map of every building that would indicate the, the spaces and the capacity limits, which are far under what the state fire marshal and the state recommended. This particular slide, again, it's hard to see, but it can be referenced on our, on our website. It details some things about hand washing and different sanitation items as you enter rooms, face coverings, which are required statewide, the reduction at the secondary schools in, in passing periods to avoid student congestion in the hallway. Of course, the physical distancing within classrooms, hallways, and commons areas, and the signage that was alluded to. In fact, signage was delivered to all of our elementary schools today and is being put out, and tomorrow will be at all the secondary schools. So there'll be significant guidance, visible guidance for, for folks to follow as they're in and out of the buildings. Again, the hand sanitizing is huge, and then the clean air process with the ventilation and circulation system underneath the HVAC process. So those things have been, things we've been looking at pretty significantly as we've gone down this path. Again, we cannot guarantee that there won't be a student that won't come into our building or a staff or a student that won't contract something, but we're doing everything in, in our, in our power under the guidance and recommendations of the, the health professionals to ensure that we provide the safest and healthiest environment possible for everyone that enters our building. You know, on top of that, Chris, if you go to the next slide, we are doing, again, capacity limitation, not just in our buildings, but also in the classroom spaces. The physical distancing, the six-foot standard, we're going to be able to comply with that in classrooms for sure. It is going to be a little bit difficult at times as students congregate and walk about the hallways, but we are going to be doing everything we can to ensure that that is in place as well. And we mentioned the face coverings, the cleaning protocols, and so forth. So each building, I will mention the very last thing there, does have a COVID coordinator, which is a really cool title. And that person is a point person for our Health and Safety Director, Mike Schwartz, who will be working with buildings on a, a very regular basis to ensure the, all the protocols are in place. We will have physical barriers also at some highly congested areas, main offices, check-ins of the building and so forth, to ensure even more safety for those students and staff. Chris, could you do the next slide, please? Again, I've mentioned many of these things here. Again, the signage, the staggered arrivals and dismissals of buses and classes. We're not looking, if you saw the picture that was going on social media from, I believe it was a school down south, where they had a massive amount of students in their hallway, we will not be having that. We will be dismissing kids on a staggered basis. The sites will be working with us on that to ensure that we don't have those highly congested hallways and commons areas. Again, we have protocols for the buses and meals. We will be limiting visitor access. So in the past, we've highly encouraged families to come and visit schools. We want to get back to that, but probably not right now. So this fall, we're going to be asking for limited visitor and guests into our buildings simply because we're trying to keep the capacity at the lowest point possible. Again, we will have quarantine spaces as well. Contract, contact tracing protocols. We've been doing that all summer in our buildings. We will continue to do that via taking attendance for students and knowing where students and staff are located within the buildings. And we will have supplies available all around our building, which, of course, are masks, which we have a significant supply that we for the district, as well as face shields, hand sanitizers, cleaning supplies, and so forth. So those are the things that we've been working on for the site-based in-person blended learning models. So all of those things are things that have been, been high in our priority list as we've progressed through this process to this point. If there's any questions, I'm happy to field them to the best of my ability. This has been a team effort, so a lot of us have been working on it, and I'll answer the questions that I have answers to.
Thank you, I'm Mary Jo.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, I got it. So irrelevant of, of the county numbers, what happens in our buildings if we have students or staff that test positive? That, that, that wouldn't have anything to do with the county numbers? Then when do we decide what happens with a classroom or a building, or how does that all work?
Chris, do you want to field that question? Or you'd like me to field it?
Yeah, I'd, I'd be happy to. So, Mary Jo, we are working, so Sarah Osterman, who's our district lead nurse, is working with public health. We're required anytime there's a positive case to call in. The department and public health will come in, and they'll actually work with us to do contact tracing, determine close contacts, and help us make a recommendation about which students may need to quarantine, if we need to close a classroom, if we need to close a larger part of the school. So again, the health professionals are the ones that will come in and, and make those determinations with us. And we obviously are committed to following any and all of their recommendations to keep our staff and students safe as we move forward.
So when you say quarantine spaces, does that mean for that time during the day and then they leave?
Correct. Yeah, so if, if someone, any, whether that's an adult or a student is, has symptoms, we would want to make sure we separate them from the rest of the building. And we will have spaces identified just for that purpose. That will not be our, our nurses' station, as an example. There may be other reasons kids need to frequent, the nurse come in and out, so we're not making that. It would be a separate area that we'd, we'd use for that purpose.
Okay, great. Thanks.
I just have a question. This is a question I've been getting a lot. So if somebody in my classroom has COVID, we obviously cannot notify the entire class that, you know, so-and-so has COVID. Can you talk a little bit about why we can't do that, or why we won't be doing that?
Yeah, so actually, what they're telling us is we can identify what they're calling close contacts. And they would say you have, you were in a classroom where a particular student had tested positive, and, and then the letter or the guidance to them would encourage them to seek a test or that they should quarantine. They would actually get information about that specific close contact. What, what we do have to be careful with, with data privacy as we're talking to the health officials is saying we can't, we can't make that a general broad announcement. But like other things, if there are cases within a, within a school or an outbreak, we can make that, we just can't make the individual name or information public about that.
Are we doing anything for temperature caking? I didn't see that on the list.
Yeah, so we, in talking with Sarah Osterman, again, one of the things they are recommending at this point, the guidances, is to ask families to, and employees, to do that prior to coming to school or prior to coming to work. If there are individuals during the day that we need to screen, then we would assist or, or do that. What they didn't want is a protocol where students would be queuing up at a particular entrance or doorway, which would then limit that six-foot distancing. So their recommendation at this point is to have that done prior to anyone arriving at school.
Okay. Chris or Jeff, can you address cleaning protocols and, and kind of what'll happen in classrooms and in schools on a daily or even more frequent basis?
Yeah, I can talk a little bit about that. In fact, I had a conversation with Chris Paquette, our, our director of, of maintenance today. He mentioned, you know, the days, the day shift custodians are going to be expected to disinfect all high-touch spaces on an ongoing basis throughout the, throughout the school day. That includes doors, windows, handrails, restrooms. The, the custodians will be following similar protocols, but concentrating on disinfecting all high-traffic areas in, in, in classrooms as well. You know, I'll jump on a little bit, because this one's come up too, so I'll try to address it here a little bit. Our HVAC systems, you know, the, the air circulation's been a big topic of conversation, and I'll just share what Chris shared with me today, Chris Paquette. All the HVAC systems are going to be running at full capacity and full occupancy. We'll be providing 100% filter, filters outside air into all the appropriate channels incoming of the building. And as outside air is pulled into, we're going to have two different types of filtration systems. They don't mean much to you, and really to me either, quite honestly, but they're called MERV 8 and MERV 13. Sounds like they're pretty good. I, I'm being a little bit silly there, but they, they are supposed to be the highest quality of, of filtration systems for buildings of our size. Those will be filtered in the air before they even get to the main trunk of the building. And the programs are going to be set within those HVAC systems to run earlier in the morning, later in the evenings, to make sure we get the highest amount of air exchange possible each day. I've learned a lot about HVACs and, and air exchange systems. And we are doing everything we can in terms of the, the cleaning and the circulation of the air, as well as the surfaces within the building. So this is going to be different than it's been in the past. This is a, there isn't going to be a, a chance where someone might not get to a space within our buildings. Everything is going to be clean on a, on a ongoing and a regular basis to ensure that the health and safety of students and staff to the best of our ability.
If I could also just comment, and I'm no, no public health expert by any means, but as I recall to some of the new learnings that have been coming out from the CDC is about more the transmission, aerosolized transmission, which is why the HVAC systems are so important, and less about surface transmission. So that's something new. It's kind of a development that's occurred over the last 60 days or so. So I just wanted to point that out as well. So, great, we've got updated HVAC systems now.
Are there any other questions on this particular topic, or we can pass it to the instructional folks?
This is Jim DeMay. What are the buses going to look like?
So great question. You know, Jim, that was a high topic of conversation all summer long. At the outset, it was going to look like we were going to get about seven kids on a 77-passenger bus. The guidance changed significantly, I would say, mid-July. The capacity of a bus is going to be more along the lines of 24 students on a 77-passenger bus. They're going to be provided with, you know, it's, it's not going to sit where you want. We're going to try to cluster families, family units together as best we can. But the buses are going to be fairly sparsely populated, which will actually align well with the capacities of our building. Right now, we're looking anywhere between, you know, I'm going off my memory here, but somewhere between 25 and 30% of our students and families are choosing the distance, the full-time distance learning option. And roughly half of our kids are going to be coming to school of that other, you know, roughly 65 to 70%. So you're looking at around 38, 37% of our kids coming to school, and not all of them ride school buses. So some of them will be close to that, that 24-person capacity of the 77-passenger bus, and others will be under that with, with seat assignments and so forth to ensure the highest quality. We actually had a conversation today. We have a three-tier busing system, as all of you are aware, and probably a lot of the public too. There's going to be a significant cleaning and sanitation process that's going to be done between each of the, between tiers one and two, and tiers two and three. And again, also before and after school too. So the cleaning and sanitation has to exist on the school buses, just as it exists in the buildings. Thank you.
Okay. Angie, want to take instructional models?
Sure. Yep, absolutely. Thanks. So for the instructional component of our reopening schools plan, we worked with the instructional leadership team, teachers, and principals. And what we really worked to do was to define three core instructional building blocks that could be the foundation for learning, whether it be in a distance model or the blended hybrid model. We thought that this would be beneficial as would give us more flexibility as we know we may need to move in and out of those models. So by having these three core building blocks defined, it'll help us to do that as needed. So I want to talk to you briefly about those three model, the three building blocks. And the first one, if you go ahead, Chris, and move forward on that. The first building block is around direct instruction. And with this first building block, all of the components that you see here are components that will work both for blended and for distance. So we're looking at pre-recorded lessons for anywhere, anytime access for individual students. The creation of those pre-recorded lessons and that content would be distributed among the professional learning communities. So the teachers will be able to work collaboratively to share those pre-recorded lessons with the students that they're working with in either a distance or a blended model. We're asking if these recordings are short for students, no more than 10 minutes. Best practices says that's about the extent of the attention span and good content can be delivered in that amount of time. We also learned from our distance learning models in the springtime was that we needed to help families with access to the common digital tools and platforms that were being used. So technology is currently working on creating a one-stop shop for families. It gives specific information about the digital tools and platforms that are being used and how to access them so that families can help support their children at home, either in a distance learning model or when they're doing some at-home learning in a blended model. We are also looking to partner with our liaisons to make sure that that information is accessible in multiple languages for all of our families. Looking to provide some dedicated planning time at the beginning of the year. As we know that this, the beginning of the school year always requires planning for our teachers, but this is a unique year. And so we're looking for providing some additional planning time and we're in the final stages of being able to talk about what that will look like for our teachers and our professional learning communities. And then also, we're looking to provide a consistent delivery platform for the core technology tools. So in the distance learning model that happened in the spring, we had a wide variety as we went into that emergency learning, as we call it. Where teachers, there are a lot of free, free technology tools that came out that teachers were able to latch on to. And so while that provided our teachers and our students with access to some content, there's a lot of variability in our system. And so we are looking to, this time around, provide some more consistency so the parents know where to go and how to use those tools. So we have secured CSO as a learning platform tool for pre-K through 3 students. We've been using Google Meet in our system and we will continue to use that, but we're also moving to Zoom as our main form of digital platforming that'll allow just, it's a much more advanced tool and allowing for breakout groups and for teachers to have those interactions with students, have students interact with one another in a more seamless way. So we're excited about those changes with Zoom. And then Google Classroom will be the way that students will get access to the content in grades four through 12. We're also looking to help provide some templates for how teachers organize their Google Classrooms. There are many ways to do that and teachers, there's a lot of variability in the system. And so we got some feedback and surveys that we need to have some consistency. So we're working to help support teachers and providing them some templates with how to organize that. So that's building block one. And Chris, if you want to move on, we can take a look at building block two, which really focuses on live engagement and interaction. And there are a few differences here between what it might look like in the distance model and the blended model. So I'll talk about them and then I've got a graphic to show you as well. So the key components are the same, but how it's delivered is a little bit different in distance and blended. So in the live engagement, each student has the opportunity for meaningful learning activities on a regular basis. And you'll notice that I put a little asterisk there because when the original group who put together and helped us create these building blocks, when we were talking about putting this together, we also knew that it would be important to have some clear definitions about what we meant. So when we talk about meaningful engagement activities, what are some examples of that? To help provide some structure for teachers around that and how we're defining that. And what do we mean by regular basis? Everybody could have a different definition of that. So subgroups worked during the first week of August to come together, to come up with some common language and defining what some of those time parameters might be. We're finalizing those and plan to have those out to teachers and sites by early next week. That those meaningful engagement activities could be one-on-one meetings and activities with the teacher and/or small group activities. Teachers would also provide in this building block, regular opportunities for peer-to-peer learning activities. We know that that's something that our students desired in the, in the spring and something that we know is meaningful and good for learning, for students to be engaging with one another. So we'll do that again regularly will be defined through that subgroup that did some work a few weeks ago. We're looking to also provide teachers with the permission and to have some dedicated time to build relationships with students, so including peer-to-peer connections. We had an advantage in the spring of, our teachers knew our students very well when we had to move to this model. As students come to us in the fall, we're not going to have the same time that we would have to build those relationships in a face-to-face model. So we were providing some dedicated time to build those relationships and we're using the term that it's connections before content as we move into the school year. And then also a time for teachers to help students understand the expectations and structures and procedures for how to use the technology tools that are provided to them, whether it be during the blended learning model, on their at-home learning days or during the distance learning for those students. So Chris, if we move to the next slide, I'll point out just a couple of differences for how these components are the same, but how they're delivered and when they're delivered will be a little bit different. So I just want to highlight those. So the meaningful engagement activities will happen with their teachers on the in-person learning days. So that's when the students are in the buildings. Students will have, it's important to note that students will have access to support for at-home, on the at-home learning days. So when they're at home, doing the activities that the teacher has provided through Google Classroom or by telling them about it when they're with them the day before. So while that, the classroom teacher's primary responsibility is going to be for the students that are in front of them on that particular day, we will have a site-designated staff member to provide some support to students for those at-home learning days. So if they have questions about assignments, there'll be a person they can go to. On an in-person learning day, the teacher may say, you know, these two students, they need a little additional support or maybe an enrichment activity. And so would set that up during that at-home or that in-person learning day for that to happen the following day with a site-designated person. That would be the same for any small group meetings that would happen throughout the day. So it'll be led by the classroom teacher on in-person learning days. And if those activities were planned by the PLC, it would be supported by a site-designated staff member on those at-home learning days. That wouldn't happen every single day where those small groups would happen for at-home learning days, but if that was something that the PLC or the teacher wanted to have happen, that person would be available to do that. And then regularly scheduled opportunities for those peer-to-peer activities, again, led by the classroom teacher on the in-person learning days and then supported by a designated staff member on those at-home learning days. I did want to point out that when we're talking about small groups meeting together and teachers meeting with small groups of students, that we will have the protocols in place so that that close contact does not occur. So physical distinct guidelines are saying six feet away, everybody will be wearing masks and they're not in those small groups for longer than 10 minutes. So if we, by following those protocols, then we are making sure that students are safe and our teachers are safe and providing that opportunity for students. Chris, if you move to the next slide, I just put together, just for building block two, because this is where the most differences are between the blended and distance. So you can see the meaningful learning activities with their teachers. On the in-person learning days, it's led by the classroom teacher. If you're in a distance model, that'll be a regular basis with the distance learning teacher. Okay, so that's would be providing that. I'm going to, again, that subgroup is working on defining that regular for distance as well. And then those peer-to-peer learning activities in distance learning, those opportunities are provided by the distance learning teacher. And then for our blended students who are choosing that model, it'll be led by the classroom teacher on in-person learning days and then supported by the site-designated staff member that I've been mentioning. And then our third and final building block is around feedback and assessment. And this will be the same regardless of distance or the blended model. It's providing a variety of ways for students to show what they know. So it can be through conversations that teachers are having. Students can do videos to show teachers how they did a particular math problem to show their understanding. It could be written, it could be from pre-recorded lessons or Google Forms. We could use those as well. Teachers providing timely feedback to students in a variety of ways. And not all that feedback needs to be put in the gradebook, but students need to know where they are in the learning progression. So teachers being able to do that, doesn't all have to be written. It could be also in those small groups and one-on-one. Provide parent training for the technology platform. So this is just helping parents understand, where do I go when I'm looking for an up-to-date summary of the grade? And where do I go to look at what is my student supposed to currently be doing? So the differences between using Synergy, the gradebook, and then Google Classroom, technology is working on providing some information for families to clarify that for them as well. And then just that we would communicate with students and parents regularly about their progress towards that. So we believe that these three building blocks give us a solid foundation for delivering high-quality instruction through a distance learning model and/or a blended learning model. And we believe that will also help us to move through the different models as we need to based on how the situation is ever-changing. Take any questions if anybody had any?
Any questions for Angie?
I do have one question. So we're starting out now where we have blended model and distance model, where we have cohorts of students doing both. If we get to a point, you know, we're at that 30 caseload number where we are forced, our entire student body is forced into an all-distance model, then are all the cohorts kind of blended together then for the rest of the year? Or do they remain separate and they still have their distance learning instructors that they were set up with that cohort? And then the blended cohort has the teachers that they started the year with, they continue? I mean, do you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah, I think I do. Yep. So our intent is to keep whatever teachers that the students start out with at the beginning of the year, will stay with that teacher regardless of the model. Right? So, yep, that's our plan right now.
Great. Thank you.
Angie, I have a question. If we have some families that might be using some other option, if they decide they're going to do that part of the time, can they opt in for something they might want from the blended learning experience as well?
I'm not sure I'm understanding what you're asking, so.
We'd say a group of parents do something off our grid, but it isn't for the whole time. Can they come back to us for some distance learning modules that they're not fulfilling through their other methods that they're choosing for their students?
Yeah, that's a great question. One I haven't heard yet, Jeff. I don't know if you've had any conversations with the principals about that. But you know, what we're asking families now is, are you distance? Are you blended? And that you'll be full-time in that, whatever that is. So I haven't heard of anybody saying, I want to do, you know, some online learning school over here for some of my learning, but come to Mounds View for some of those other courses. I haven't heard of any families asking for that.
And if they choose, you're asking them to commit. So is that for the semester or the year or how often can they change?
Yeah, so I'm going to let Jeff, you've worked through that one, so I'm going to let you answer that one.
I'll start with the first part, Mary Jo. If a student is, for example, homeschooled or has gone to some other provider for their instruction, we would allow them to rejoin us provided two things. And one, we have space in our buildings, which we may not, but they're always able, if they're our district residents, to access our learning through the distance learning module. So students would be able to get instruction from us if they went another route, following normal chain of protocols that we would have. Again, provided we have space, but if we don't, then they would have the distance learning ability still to have access to our instruction. The question about going back and forth, Mary Jo, if a student wanted to, it's been a common question. If a student was currently in a blended model and they then for some reason or other chose to go distance, they would be able to do that. We just need a little bit of time to coordinate them and that would be, in that case, a different teacher. They're changing models. If, unless they were just out for a short period of time, excuse me, then they would likely stick with that same person and come back from their teacher. If a student wanted to go from a distance learning model to a blended, some school districts are saying you must commit for a year. Some have said a semester and we are not going to lock ourselves into that because we would love to have our kids come back to school. So I've talked with parents and we're just asking them, I think Chris might have alluded to this a little bit, at a natural break. We're using that as a vague definition on purpose. Could be MEA, could be a semester time. We want our kids back. If we have an ability to get them back in our buildings, we want to welcome them back in. But we also want time for them to be properly placed in a classroom where they're really up to speed and the teachers are ready to accept them and their students as well. So we want our kids back if we can. So some of our families have indicated to me, they've said, Jeff, I'm going to start distance, see how things are going. If they're going well, can we have a conversation? The answer is yes.
Okay. I have had some people ask, what is that natural break?
I hope I explained it well. We're keeping it vague on purpose. The natural break is going to be allowing enough time for the families and the school together to determine when is a good time to re-enter back into that area. It could be at different times throughout the school year.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Looks like we can move on, Chris. Great. All right, we'll have Jen join us here.
Yep. You can go ahead and click on the next slide. Thanks, Chris. Good evening, everyone. I am going to provide an overview of some of the work that we've been engaged in as far as student support and include an update on some staff support that we're excited about as well. So in the spring, when I came to the board, we had talked about a couple of positions that we would be adding to our system. At that time, we had talked about adding one, mental health specialist, a chemical health specialist, and then a learning support specialist, which was really aligned with supporting those resources and creating kind of an organized, I guess, a way to organize those resources in our system and find out what those gaps are. As we re-engaged in, re-evaluated our work and what's ahead of us this year with those supports, we determined that it would be best to hire two mental health specialists and wait on that learning support specialist. So I'm excited to be able to share with everyone that we've hired John Norwood, who is a licensed alcohol and drug counselor who will be joining our team. And he will provide supports throughout our system, throughout the district, students and families and communities, providing some professional development for our staff as well. And then we have hired two mental health specialists, Carla Anton, which may be a familiar name for some of our community members and students. She was a co-located therapist at Mounds View High School, Chippewa Middle School, and then also our area learning center through Northeast Youth and Family Services. She left there and went on to have her own private practice and is now joining us as part of our team. And then we also are adding Julia Geigel, who is a clinical licensed social worker, as that other mental health specialist. So as you'll remember, in the spring, when we had talked, I talked about how they'll be helping provide those supports and structures throughout our system to help teams that are in our buildings. They'll also be able to provide some professional learning that's very specific to the worker on mental health and that comprehensive planning that we've been engaged in. They also will be providing resources and referrals and also providing supports to our community as we support students and families. So look forward to meeting them as we enter into the school year. Secondly, I wanted to go over some work that we've been doing with our employee assistance program. We've been working with Northeast Youth and Family Services to be able to provide some direct therapeutic services to any of our staff and teachers throughout our system. So any of our employees, they can access this. And this information was loaded today in StaffNet to provide that information. So they can either contact Jen Howard, who's our benefit specialist in human resources, or the EAP telephone number. They can go online. There's a live chat. There's also text messaging. So there's a lot of ways to access those services and I just really want to highlight those options. It can be something through Northeast Youth and Family Services or it can also be access to a master's level mental health professional 24/7 through that EAP for any employee in our system. So we're excited to have those supports in place. And again, specific questions can really be directed to Jen Howard in human resources or through that EAP program. And they can find that information on StaffNet. As Chris had kind of got us started here tonight, one of the things that he'd mentioned was the subgroup work that we had taken on earlier this year when we were provided the guidance of looking at the three plans. I pulled together a group from across our system that included many of our support, student support staff, from equity specialists to cultural liaisons, to our deans, to school psychs, to teachers, to principals, and really took a look at what that work ahead of us is. And I'm highlighting a few of those things tonight. So one of the first things is really looking at So one of the first things is really looking at what our social-emotional learning model is. As we know, social-emotional learning is integrated in everything that we do. And so we're really looking for what those pro-social skills are and how we can embed that in everything we do across our system. And we really want to look at what those core resources are as well to provide throughout our system. So there's a lot of work in front of us to do that. But I know our teams are ready to come together and do that work on behalf of our students and families. We will also be looking at expanding, continuing to expand, our co-located service providers and really looking at our mental health specialists helping us understand where those needs are for the buildings so we can allocate those resources directly there. We will have the option through those agencies that we partner with to be able to do in-person, if families are comfortable, in-person therapeutic services, but also telehealth, which would be something similar to what we're experiencing this evening where the therapist would be on one side of the computer and the student or family would be on the other. So we're excited that we can still continue to provide those resources for families. And families can also find that information, who that co-located therapist is for the school where their student attends, by looking on their staff directory. So that information is there with a telephone number and also email address for those co-located therapists. We'll also be looking at some professional learning and development. Where we will kind of start here at the beginning of the year is we're looking at working with a program called Cognito, which has been a partnership through the Minnesota Department of Health and the Department of Education, which is free to districts. And it's a virtual suicide prevention training. One of the things that we're kind of in the last leg of is being able to get that approved through our staff development committee. So we will look to be able to offer that as well throughout our system. And that is something that is meant for every staff member and every employee to be able to access. And like I said, it is virtual. So that's one component of that type of professional learning that we'll focus on. The other thing that we're gonna be looking at is, or continuing, I should say, is really working to be able to provide some training and learning around how best are we supporting families who are in some housing transition around our McKinney-Venno eligible families? So we'll look to do that this fall with buildings as well. And then continuing to work with Ramsey County on how best to understand how we provide feedback and supports and also reports to Ramsey County around child protection and how do we best recognize that whether we're in a distance or blended model? So those are some of the most, I would say, upcoming professional learning that we're gonna do. We will continue to update the board and the community on what those things will look like as we move through the year because we know we'll have more to do. The other recommendation that came out of the subcommittee was enhancing some of our translation and interpretation or interpreting services. Right now, we utilize a language line, which is used quite often to connect with families. We also knew that we've been providing a lot of communication that's written. And so that was one of the recommendations, is that we look to be able to get a service that can help principals translate information as they send it out. So we will now, we've partnered with Lexicate, and they will help us be able to translate emails, text messages, and then also letters and documents that are sent home to families. So principals will have access to that. Lastly, I wanted to provide a quick update. In the spring, we had talked a lot about learning supports and that mapping process with COVID and the planning that has been happening around that. In some ways, that learning supports has taken a pause as far as the mapping process. But we've remained engaged in it as we're learning about new resources. And so that will continue to pick up and get more attention as we enter back into the fall here and get into September. So I'll provide more updates as well as we move through the year and where we're at in that process of mapping what resources we currently have at the district building and community. And then what are some of the gaps and where we need to add those additional resources and with who? Lastly, something that I reported out in the spring was the link that we have utilized on our district website that has resources available. I'm working with Eric Tell to create a student support and engagement website that families and community will be able to access, which will have a lot of those resources available, including upcoming events for parents to be able to learn about some of those supports, some of the learning for them as parents and also for students, and then also our staff. So we can, people can look forward to seeing that before the school year starts. And that is the end of my update.
Thanks, Jen. Any questions from the board on that?
I do have a question about the, some of the professional development you talked about, Jen.
Yep.
You talked about some like suicide prevention training that will be available to staff. Is that, and I think you said it's like virtual?
Yep, it's a virtual training.
So if they do that, is that on their own time? Or how do we, how are we encouraging our staff? It's such a priority for us, for, you know, for, we have made it a priority, this mental health awareness and development for students, for staff. How are we providing support for staff to do that? Not just making it available, but, you know, if it's taking six or eight or two hours of their time, how are we ensuring that they're, you know, I know there's some situations where, you know, teachers who are committed to this spent a whole Saturday afternoon on their own time going through some of this type of training. And I just, although I applaud that and I, it's really not, I don't think that's something that we should expect our staff to do on their own time.
Sure, yep. No, that's a great question, Sandra. And we'll continue to work with buildings and building principals around what that schedule can look like for staff. As you know, we've entered into space where we're providing that time for teachers and we'll look at those really closely. And teachers can, you know, it's one of the things that we've talked about as far as relicensor too. So for their license, they will need this training. But always providing different options, I think, is the best so people can opt into that as well. So we'll look at it on a continuum, but work really closely with building principals around what some of those options are for teachers and make it accessible and timely for them.
Maybe we can move on to communication and resources. Colin, are you out there?
Yes, hello. When we broke for summer, you will probably remember that we promised families and staff ongoing communication throughout the summer. And what that meant was we would share the information we have when we have it. Does not always mean that we will have the answer that everybody wants at the exact time that they want it, but that we would at least tell families and staff that is something that we're working on, more to come later. Best I can tell, we've sent from the district at least about a dozen messages since school was out. And what I want to emphasize is pretty soon you will see a shift where there will be less coming from the district and more coming from specific schools about how exactly all of this is going to work for staff and for families. But first, tomorrow, there is a message coming from the district and it's highly anticipated. And it will explain to every family what their learning model selection is. We're gonna confirm that we have heard from you that you have chosen distance learning or that we've heard that you've chosen blended learning. If they've chosen blended learning, we're going to let them know tomorrow which cohort or group placement that they will be a part of. And you've heard us reference Group 1 Monday, Wednesday, Group 2 Tuesday, Thursday. That's the information that's coming from the district tomorrow. On an ongoing basis, at mounseyschools.org/reopening, we have a number of resources. I'm just gonna hit a few of them here. The first one that is not actually listed here, but could be, is our learning model tracker, which every Thursday will be updated to our current number and how that translates into the current learning model that we'll be operating under. Of course, we have the reopening planning document. That was first presented, boy, I forget, but it was late July. We've already updated it as of August 14th. And that will be updated at least once a week, usually by Thursday afternoon when we have the new number and if anything significant has changed in that document. FAQs, frequently asked questions. We cannot possibly list all of the questions we get. So I stress the F of that, the frequently asked part. And so what we're trying to do is keep up to date on a regular basis with synthesizing what are we hearing from parents or from families or staff? And what are the answers we can provide for them? You've seen earlier tonight, we've developed some infographics that are an attempt to help people visualize or understand what a blended learning school will look like, what a blended learning classroom will look like. Way back when, we had some reopening survey results, asking families and staff what they felt, what their plans were. We've shared that online. Couple weeks ago, I believe it was, well, when we first announced the reopening planning document, we constructed a communication timeline with some key events, some key dates. So families and staff could at least plan for knowing, well, we're not gonna hear about our cohort planning next week, but we're gonna hear about it in two weeks, just so they have a sense of what that timeline looks like. If anything major shifts there, we will update that as well. We have a tab on that website, resources for supports, that includes meals, childcare, testing, getting actual COVID testing and internet access. And then finally, some generic links to state or Minnesota Department of Health or Department of Education, you know, executive orders or state planning guidance. So like I said, we will continue to communicate from a district level when our messages can be K-12 district-wide, messages that affect everybody. But really soon, you're gonna start to see a shift at the school level for how it will impact a specific school community. Happy to take any questions about communication.
Colin, you did such a great job communicating to us that there are no questions.
There will never not be any questions, Jonathan. But we're gonna try to answer, you know how that goes.
Well, I just want to close by saying thank you. Thank you to the board for the time tonight, for the ability to present this information. There's a lot happening. If we're certain of anything, it's that we're uncertain about a variety of things. Guidance will continue to change, health conditions will continue to change. And you have our commitment to continuing to come forward and share information as it becomes available. So we appreciate the time tonight and the ability to go through the presentation for you and the public.
Thanks, Chris. And I would just offer my thanks to you and your team, a tremendous amount of work. I think we've heard this a number of times tonight. It is a moving target and we anticipate it will continue to be over the course of the, you know, between now and when we start school and certainly in the weeks and months ahead throughout this school year. You know, we've used the term unprecedented and it really is. So thanks for your leadership on this. You know, we as a board have viewed this as a bit of a management decision with regards to how you deploy, working within the guidelines set by MDE and MDH. That's a little bit different than what we're hearing from some school districts across the state. So we've appreciated that leadership and the constant consultation with our group. We had an opportunity to do an even more in-depth review of this opening plan last week at our work session. Would extend my gratitude to, you know, members of our staff, I know who have been engaged at various levels in the planning process since the guidance has been provided. And so that we ensure that we're putting people back into our buildings as safely as possible. And then I'd just acknowledge, we're hearing quite a bit from, you know, various facets of the community. We recognize that there are folks that are scared, there are folks that are concerned about the health of themselves as our employees, of their students. I mean, know that we're taking that feedback and it is playing into every decision that's being made. It is not falling on deaf ears. There isn't a perfect solution. It's the hardest puzzle that I've ever been a part of helping to solve for. So I'd ask that our community hang in there with us. I trust the leadership of our superintendent and this administration. I'm confident that the best interest and safety of our students and our staff and our community are of utmost priority. And that will continue to be the case as we manage through. What I can tell you is it's gonna be a difficult school year. And again, I'll go back to that moving target theme. So thanks, thanks to everybody involved. That will take us to item 5.1, 2020-2021 District Operational Plan. And Superintendent Lennox will give us a quick overview on that.
Yes, I will do that. So board members in your packet, you do have a copy of the 2020-21 District Operating Plan Goals. Tonight, we're bringing this plan forward for your approval. We had a chance to go through all of the goals in detail at our meeting on August 6th. Tonight, we're presenting you with the final document. So for the public, these goals will be posted on our district website as we do annually. This year, the goals fall into three distinct categories. Our work around the Equity Promise, planning and implementation for the reopening of schools, and the completion of construction projects across the district. So there are nine total goals spread across these three categories. And it is those goals that we'll spend the balance of the year working on. Those will be our focus. One unique aspect of this year's goals is the flexibility that will be required in responding to the changing health conditions and guidance that will be received from the state. We just took quite amount of time going through that. We know we'll be required to make adjustments and we commit to keeping both the school board and public up to date as things change. So we'll be sure to reflect any and all new expectations in the DOP that is posted on the district website. And we will keep that current throughout the balance of the school year. So at this time, I would submit this copy of the 2020-21 District Operational Plan. We do need board action this evening, so administration is recommending approval.
Any questions for the superintendent?
I don't have a question, but this is Heidi Danielson. I just want to acknowledge all the work that's gone into this plan as well. And in my view, the responsiveness of Chris, you and your team, especially around the issues of race and equity that have really hit us hard here in Minnesota after the murder of George Floyd. And I just commend all the work that's gone into listening to so many different communities within our school district and listening with really an open ear and knowing that there are some places that we really need to see changes. So I was really encouraged to see all the different issues around race and equity that we're dealing with this year. And I know it's a tough year with everything going on with COVID, but I'm really pleased to see that that's a priority for our district, our administrative team, but also our entire staff and our students and our community as well. So thanks.
Any other thoughts? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the 2020-2021 District Operational Plan as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Bach?
Aye.
Danielson?
Aye.
DeMay?
Aye.
Blashin?
Aye.
Sager? Sager? Mary Jo, are you on mute?
It looks like she's dropped off the call.
Okay. Westerman, aye. Chair Weinhegen?
Aye, motion carries. I'll take us item 6.1, Summer Student Celebrations, and we'll ask Assistant Superintendent Rital Hoover and Director of Community Ed Carl Brown to present.
Thanks, Chair Weinhegen. I'm gonna jump in. This is fun to talk about, you know. So summer school went on as, not quite as planned. You know, we had three different versions and we landed on one that was a distance learning model. And it was 16 instructional days from July 6th through July 30th. And, you know, I really want to say, it went tremendously well. Start with elementary, you know, our amazing staff, they dedicated time this summer to intentionally planning high-quality, engaging lessons for our kids. They took time to plan lessons, but they also prepped learning kits that were sent home to families. A lot of staff and A lot of staff answered our call to assist with delivering the materials to the homes of our students and families that were not able to come and pick them up on their own. We had significant connections with kids through live, small group instructional gatherings focused on literacy and math. Really powerful. We saw a lot of growth for our kids this summer. This was particularly important for us because we did have some kids who, you know, for no fault of their own, had some struggles through the spring distance learning process. So we really intentionally reached out and made some significant connections and those kids made a lot of growth academically. Another win for us in the elementary area was the involvement and the enjoyment of the summer school teachers. They really were proud of how it went with live read-alouds with kids. And even though it was virtual, we saw significant connections with student to student and also teacher to student. Really strong participation. Again, and the academic success was significant. In the middle school, you know, we took this opportunity this summer to really focus on the building of community and connection with the kids. And it really showed through this collaboration. You know, there was one, a teacher wanted to make sure that we mentioned, there was a comment made on the very last day. It was, you know, I don't want to be done with summer school. Who will I read with for the rest of the summer? They really enjoyed their small groups and their work with their teacher. And again, impressed with the learning opportunities and how intentional the students and the teachers were with connecting together in small groups and with one another. At the high school level, we really focused on credit recovery. We had over 100 credits recovered for our seniors this summer in credit recovery. Teachers created learning spaces that were very much individualized, personalized to meet the needs of kids where they were at. And we had 100 kids engaged in a separate account. 100 more kids were engaged in hybrid FIAD and Health this summer. That's a pretty significant number and we're really proud of that. You know, the other thing I'll mention is we were able to reduce our ratios. We were down to 12 to 1 at the elementary level and did a lot of small groups, so those groups became even smaller. And the middle school was 15 to 1. Really proud of how we got connected to kids who really were in need of getting connected. You know, at the end, I'll just kind of, you know, share this. You know, we highly prefer face-to-face interactions, but sometimes significant disruptions such as a global pandemic, they provide opportunities. And in this case, we learned a lot about virtual student-to-student and student-to-teacher engagement, which has really helped us in planning a more robust, high-quality blended and distance learning platform as we enter this year of the unknown. So again, while nobody wanted to go distant in the summer, we sure learned a lot and it was significant in the success we saw with kids and the connections they're making with teachers and one another. So we're really proud about that. And it's fun to talk about this rather than the reopening of schools and how we're going to wipe down desks and things. So those things are incredibly important, but it's fun to talk about teaching and learning. And so that's what happened this summer. We're pretty proud of it.
Thanks, Jeff. I want to continue with that and talk a little bit about community education and some of the programs that we did. Typically, summer is pretty busy with community education and a lot of activities. Definitely was this summer, not quite as traditional as we'd have, but things still continued. Starting with summer school and some of the things Jeff talked about, when we shifted over to distance learning in the spring, so did adult education. So our adult ABE program at Silverview continued on with distance learning. Over the summer, we run a summer school program and we had about 100 students that continued to participate each week. A four-week program, that's in GED programs, Career Pathways, our adult ESL programs. And then we did do some Pearson testing, which is in-person. It's something that currently there isn't an alternative. And so we were able to do that safely and had quite a few people each week come in and do testing and continue with that. With youth enrichment and activities, that was a big shift. We had a spring catalog or a summer catalog that went out to families in February and we had to shift gears and go from a pretty robust model into providing different opportunities. And so we really moved over to online and hybrid options. Anywhere from art to computer coding classes to Minecraft, Legos, STEM options. We had a data science course, Spanish classes, knitting, a lot of different things that were going on. Some of those were online only. Some of those were kit programs where we had people stop by the district office or delivered kits to people and had interactive direct instruction or just ones where we had activities. We had about 358 people that participated in those and had really good responses from people that were looking for some structure and activities to do. So it was fun to see that. High school programs, traditionally, we do a lot of high school sports camps and clinics, a lot of athletic programs and other things where we're getting kids on site. And back in June, when the Department of Health Guidelines came in and opened up for us, we took a really good look at those and wanted to see if we were able to fit within the guidelines. I can't say enough about our coaches, our activities directors, our operations team, community ed staff, everyone really focusing on what we could do to provide safe opportunities for kids. We had about 650 kids that participated in community ed-run programs. And those would be fee-based programs through strength and conditioning programs, basketball, soccer, track and field, volleyball. And we had a great experience with that. Heard from a lot of kids and families that were really happy with having those opportunities. This summer was different. We tried to make efforts available and wanted to make sure people were very well informed of what we could do and what we couldn't do. And our coaches and groups were great about providing opportunities at-home options for families if they weren't comfortable coming in person. So it wasn't that kids had to pick and choose completely. They both had options with that. We also had some things, I just wanted to give some information on that. Our coaches also run, when the State High School League shifted a little bit, they gave more access to a lot of our teams over the summer than we typically would. And we had all kinds of things that would be under open gym, where basically coaches just said, if you want to come join, we'll do some drills, we'll have opportunities. Hundreds of kids that were doing that in all kinds of different sports and we're working with that. To pull that all off, we had COVID plans in place and really worked through all the details about cleaning and sanitation and protocols. And it was a really good opportunity for us to work together and provide a good opportunity for kids. So that was a really great thing that we were still able to provide as much in-person activities as we had. In adult enrichment, that was one of the things we were kind of gearing up from last year. We shifted a lot of our programs online. I think we had shared some of those back in the spring. But a great example, we've worked with Master Gardeners programs with Ramsey County. And we actually saw a better enrollment when we moved online than we had done in-person. We would run between 20 and 30 people running a program. So we had almost 150 people doing adult enrichment programs with financial planning and retirement options were possible. I think people were looking at different things they could do when they had time on their hands. Another area too that we saw, along with those guidelines with community use of facilities, that's always a big part of what we do in the district. Within community education in our district, we make our facilities available to other groups. And so when youth programs and youth associations that are very active in our community started to understand what their seasons or what their summers could look like, we had a lot of groups that were working on skill development and other programs. And so if you were driving around, you saw groups using our soccer fields and other things where they were able to do that. So it wasn't directly a part of what we're doing, but it's programs they were able to engage. And they're also looking at what this means for the fall of trying to provide additional opportunities for students and families in programs that are pretty common and people are used to it. But everybody's trying to adapt to what the new requirements would be and know they may need to change as well, but a lot of great use. Couple other things too with Meals on Wheels, one of our programs, we've actually seen an increase in meals delivered through COVID. It's something where we've got a lot of seniors in our area that just wanted to reduce contacts, so it's been a great option for them. They may not be traditional clients or needed, but it was a great way for them to have things delivered to them, make it a little bit easier during this time. And we also received some special funding from Ramsey County to help serve more meals to people in need that were directly impacted by COVID. And then the last area is with our Ralph Frieder Food Shelf. We've talked about this before, but definitely there's been some financial challenges for a lot of our families in our district and so need has been high. We've been able to continue throughout the summer, provide drive-up pickup of food and different resources for families. We've got the back-to-school school supply drive that's currently going on right now and in a way to try to help families in need get some school supplies. But on the other side of it, not everyone is in high need in our area. And so donors have been very generous. People have been very supportive in helping out people in need. So it's been a great balance for that. So a lot of great things happening. Definitely a summer like we've never seen before. But when it may seem like it's quiet, there's actually been a lot of things happening throughout the summer. So just wanted to provide that update for you all.
Thanks to Carl and Jeff. I think we've been so entrenched in getting ready to reopen for the new school year. We forget that our buildings have been occupied throughout the summer. A lot of really great programming. I mean, activity in our community has been happening. So thanks for all the work. And that I will also note, and for those of you watching, you'll notice that we are on camera for the first time in our virtual setting. So for those of you who are Zoom room voting, I think Jeff Riedelhofer is in the lead with the background. It's very on-brand. Angie, you've got a close second. And it appears the superintendent is now working under the cloak of darkness as the night goes on. That will take us to item 7.1, Updates, AMSD and Legislative. So AMSD, Jim Demay?
Yes, hello. I attended the meeting last Friday. We quickly went over some of the special session happenings or not happenings as they may go. We had interesting presentations from the Department of Education, the deputy commissioner on reopening. We had a presentation for the Department of Health, discussions about protocols and the state epidemiologists. So, you know, mostly focused on the, you know, executive order of late July and how that affects school reopening. So that is my report.
Thanks, Jim. And I know Mary Jo dropped off as having some technical challenges. So we'll probably forego a 916 in Ramsey County Local League update tonight. I'm going to veer from the agenda just briefly. It was brought to my attention over the course of our meeting that the public comment function on our website might be broken and that there may have been some comment that was submitted and submitted in advance of the deadline that did not get read tonight. So we are digging into that, but I did have some interaction with a couple members of our PARAs union. And I was able to source a letter from Melissa Gru, one of our stewards. So I want to give a space for just a really important employee group to share their voice alongside the message that we heard from our teachers earlier. And then we will get to the bottom of what's going on with our public comment feed through the Google Doc. So I'm going to ask Sarah to read that letter.
Yes, thank you. And I do apologize for that technical issue. I have already forwarded that form onto tech support. This public comment is from Melissa Gru. "Good evening. My name is Melissa Gru. I am a paraeducator at Reach Academy and this will be my sixth school year with the district. First, I would like to say thank you to all the district staff that have spent countless hours putting together the safety plan. These are truly unprecedented times with much uncertainty requiring many hours of planning and creating new systems in hopes of providing the safest environment for all. Second, as a union steward, I have been fielding many questions from our members around the start of the 2021 school year. Many of the questions surround the basic need to simply know more about what they can expect their jobs to look like in just a few short weeks. When will we be given answers? When will we be meeting with our teams? Third, the Federal Cares Act offers protections to employees which simply are not enough. These guidelines are just that, guidelines. These guidelines are the bottom, not the ceiling. One particular area of concern is the amount of COVID-paid leave provided. It states that through December, staff could get up to 10 days of paid leave if quarantined and/or sick with COVID. Based on the nature of our jobs and close proximity to students, some staff may be asked to quarantine more than once throughout school year and could run out of sick leave. The district has said they will only provide what the federal government is providing. No one should lose a paycheck because they stayed home to keep others safe. By the district providing paid COVID leave above what the Federal Cares Act allows, the district will be guaranteeing people will not be put in a position of making a tough decision to buy food for their families or staying home to take care of themselves. Doesn't the district want to promote a culture of well-being and one where individuals are encouraged to take care of themselves above all else? The district can and must do better. Finally, due to COVID-related issues, many PARAs have already lost their jobs and many others still may either lose their jobs or have a reduction in hours. The district has stated those who are laid off will lose their healthcare coverage on August 31st. Considering the pandemic that is ravaging this nation, the district must reconsider and instead continue to provide healthcare coverage to those individuals through the end of 2020. The district has reserved funds that are to be used in cases of emergency. If not, when are we expect, when, if not when we are experiencing a global pandemic, then when is the time? This simply is the right thing to do. This is the humane thing to do. Thank you."
Thanks, Sarah, and thanks to Melissa for submitting that comment and for the partnership with our PARAs. We'll move to item 8.1, School Board Member Reports, and I will open the floor for reports from the board. Seeing none, I will just close us. This is our last board meeting before the beginning of the school year. So Sandra, I thought she was going to seal my thunder, but I will channel John Tigny, a longtime board member, who always reminded our families to not only enjoy the remainder of summer, but be prepared to watch out. We're going to, all willing, have kids at bus stops and get ready to go to school. So extra lookout as our young people are off to school. We wish everybody a wonderful school year. We recognize that families are wrestling right now with how they're going to either get their kids back to school or manage a distance learning environment with the complexities of work. Again, we talked about it earlier, the puzzle that we're all putting together. So we appreciate the support of the community, appreciate the support of our educators and our staff, our administration. And just on a personal note, just a thanks to my colleagues on the board. When you sign up to lead in public service, nobody puts a chapter in the handbook around managing through a global pandemic. We're all learning that in real time. It has been a privilege to serve along each of you. Look forward to the school year ahead. With that, is there anything else to come before the board? We are adjourned.